Good evening, everyone. I'm Judy Reese Morse, President and CEO of the Urban League of Louisiana. Welcome to this evening's candidate forum, featuring candidates running for Districts C and E. We are so glad that you've made time in your schedule to hear from the individuals you'll see on the ballot on November 13th. The Urban League is hosting forums like this one to give you the opportunity to hear directly from those who are seeking your vote. We want you to hear firsthand about the vision that each candidate has for our community, so that you're able to make an informed decision when you cast your ballot. The Urban League of Louisiana is deeply committed to voter education, voter engagement, and voter mobilization. Our Wake Up Go Vote initiative is a statewide effort that allows us to work with you to engage and to take action that will lead to stronger, thriving, prosperous communities. We believe that your vote is your voice, and we want the voices of our communities to be heard loud and clear. The first step is getting to know who your choices are for elective office. The Urban League also has a long history of fighting for voting rights for African Americans. Nationally, the fight continues to pass comprehensive voting rights and election system reform, including the John Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act. And while passage of a version in the House of Representatives represents progress, the work is now in the Senate. We ask you to add your voice to the work of the National Urban League as they continue to advocate for passage of this important civil rights legislation. Here in Louisiana, work is being done every day to promote voter engagement and to protect against voter suppression of any kind. We've been proud to stand with the Power Coalition for Equity and Justice, the support of voter fairness and equity. We're also so proud to partner with the Power Coalition on hosting this evening's forum. A little bit later this evening, you will hear from the dynamic founder, president, and CEO of the Power Coalition for Equity and Justice, Ashley Shelton. But now I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening. Stephanie Grace is a political columnist and editorial writer for The Times-Picking You, The New Orleans Advocate, and NOLA.com. She's also co-host of the Friday politics show Louisiana Considered, which is heard on WWNO in New Orleans and WRKF in Baton Rouge. Her work has appeared in The Boston Globe, The Washington Post, The Washington Spectator, Gambit Weekly, and many others, and she's been recognized for contributing to Pulitzer Prize-winning staff coverage of Hurricane Katrina. Stephanie has also received a Louisiana Press Association Award for Best Regular Column. Please join me in welcoming our moderator, Stephanie Grace. Good evening, Stephanie.
Hi Judy, thank you for having me. And thank you all, everybody out there in Cyberland for joining us, and thank you candidates for joining us tonight and for giving the voting public a chance to hear your vision for the public offices that you're seeking to hold. As you heard, the Urban League of Louisiana and the Power Coalition for Equity and Justice are hosting this and other forums to give you all, the voting public, a chance to learn more about the candidates you'll be, who will be on your ballots in November, November, not October, remember. Tonight, we're joined by candidates for the New Orleans City Council for District C and E. The night will be split into two parts. We'll first hear from the candidates for District C, and then we'll move on to the candidates for County, City Council District E. The questions for each group of candidates have been designed by the Urban League and the Power Coalition to focus on issues they both hear about regularly from the communities they serve and advocate on behalf of, excuse me, on behalf of topics such as racial equity, equitable workforce, economic opportunity, and more. All candidates were invited to participate in the forum, and all candidates receive the questions in advance. I'll introduce the candidates running for District C and ask them to provide opening statements to introduce themselves. So everybody turn on, if you're a District C candidate, please turn on your camera. Okay, so we are joined by Freddie King, Alonzo Knox, Stephen Mosgrove, Frank Perez, and Barbara Waiters. And also on the ballot are Stephanie Bridges and Vincent Milligan Jr. They couldn't join us tonight. So let's go right to opening statements, and we would like to start, we have one minute per opening statement, and let's start with Freddie King. And unmute yourselves.
Good evening, Urban League. Thank you for having me in the Power Coalition, of course. Thank you for having me. Thank you for having us. My name is Freddie Kenny third, and I am running for City Council District C. I'm born and raised in District C. I am a small business owner in District C, and my wife and I are raising our young children in District C. I believe that it's time for District C to have representation that represents everyone, regardless where you live, from the Bywater to the Marigny Cut Off to McLeanville. I believe it's time for District C to have a council member that will listen to everyone, and we haven't been having that as of late, and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alonzo Knox, one-minute opening statement.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you, Power Coalition and Urban League for hosting this event tonight. I am Alonzo Knox. I am a successful business owner. I own a business called Back of Town Coffee Parlor, in addition to a small real estate company. I first got my start in public service when I signed up for United States Marine Corps, and I served in part in combat. And in addition to that, I continued my public interest by working at all levels in politics. I worked for US Senator John Bro and his Washington DC office. I worked for Sherman Weston Broom, then State Representative in the Baton Rouge office. I then also worked for six years as a city commissioner in New Orleans for his work in Landmark Commission. I've been fighting for people and the voice of people all my adult life. I'm sick and tired of what I see in this city as the same old same old. I'm sick and tired of politicians and learning people that they deem are the ones to be in leadership. I'm sick and tired of the political machine making decisions for people who apparently have the capacity on our own to make decisions for ourselves. That's what motivated me to get in this race, and I want to fight for the District C and people to have a voice.
Thank you so much. Let's move on to Stephen Mosgrove.
Good evening, Urban League of Louisiana and Power Coalition. Thank you for facilitating citizen information tonight. I'm Stephen Mosgrove, candidate for Council District C. I grew up in Algiers, was raised by very hardworking parents, and am a lifelong Democrat. I went to Jesuit High School before studying political science at Boston College, graduating in 1993. From there, I intentionally returned home to New Orleans to do my part to support progress in our community. Over the last 20 years, I've done my part as a staffer in public service and neighborhood leadership. I've had a diversity of public service experiences from aiding Councilwoman Cynthia Willard Lewis in District E to working in two mayoral administrations in the economic development and neighborhood engagement spaces, to leading in service organizations in civic life. Thank you again for having us. I look forward to the discussion of issues this evening.
Thank you. And Mr. Perez, Frank Perez.
Hi. By way of introduction, I think voters should know I wear a lot of different hats. I'm currently a very successful small business owner. I'm also a writer, written a number of books about New Orleans. I've served as the president and co-founder of a nonprofit organization. I'm also an educator, as well as a tour guide and a lot of other things. So I bring a wide variety of experience to the race. I'm running primarily because I'm frustrated with how dysfunctional our city government has become. We have a lot of regulations on the books meant to improve quality of life. Those regulations need to be enforced. I'm not sure why they're not. We have a lot of contracts meant to deliver basic city services. Those contractors need to be held accountable. I don't think residents need to pay for services they're not receiving. Basically, we need a city government that respects us, the residents, more than special interests. The special interests and political machines have selected their candidates, and I am proud to say I am not one of them. I represent real change. I want to point out also that if elected, I would be the first openly LGBTQ person on the city council.
Thank you. And quick question, do you pronounce it Perez or Perez, the, you know? Okay, you never know in New Orleans, right?
Right.
Let's move on to Barbara Waiters. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to thank the Urban League of Louisiana and the Power Coalition for hosting this forum and giving me, us all the opportunity to give our voice on why we are running for office. I am, I am the most qualified candidate for this District C City Council position. I have over 30 years of combined experience in public service in the nonprofit private sector. I've worked for the City Council of New Orleans as Community Engagement Legislative Affairs Director under Council Member Troy Carter, now Congressman Troy Carter. But I've also had diverse experiences working in workforce development, economic development, Algiers Economic Development Foundation. My vision and the reason why I really wanted to run is that I believe that this city and this district deserves a prosperous quality of life. I think that government has gotten too big, even local government, and that we need to get back to the basics, back to what the Home Rule Charter wants us to be. And so we have to be a clean, lean machine and somebody who knows all of the aspects of government, can navigate government, private sector and public sector, really as well to hit the ground running. So quality of life is what I believe, getting back to the basics and looking at infrastructure, you know, and focusing on infrastructure and public safety.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Okay, first question, the first round of questions are going to be 30-second answers, and we will start with Mr. King. What do you think are the most important functions of a councilperson?
Most important, important functions, one, the council is a legislative body. The council supports ordinances that makes the city a better place for everyone. With that being said, I believe that the council also, the main duty is, one of the main functions is to regulate utilities, and we all see that has not been happening well in recent months or recent years. And the big thing the council does is oversight over the budget or has oversight over the budget. So when you elected council, you can, I promise you and guarantee that I would not just rubber Santa Mayor's budget. I would not just be someone who lies down for the energy companies, and I'll support ordinances that will make the city better for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Knox, 30 seconds.
Thank you. I think the most important function is the oversight of the budget, and I say that because it is in fact the budget that's going to allow administration and the city to set priorities. It is the budget that is going to determine where we want to use our funding to set policy in the city. So for me, the most important function is the oversight of the budget.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosgrove.
Yes, regulating the entergy and other services so that service improves and costs are lowered, advocating for important improvements in city performance, approving a budget that properly funds important services that people want and need, using the budget to hold departments accountable for providing good service, and knowing your district well to then create policy that improves life in the district and the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perez.
Well, I think the first thing is to be accessible and responsive and accountable to constituents. I think that constituent affairs is very important. I also think that we need to make sure that city government is doing its job. The only reason it exists is to provide basic municipal services, and when that doesn't happen, we've got to hold people accountable, whether they're contractors or bureaucrats or come what may.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Waiters.
I believe that the most important role of the council is really to review and approve the budget. The budget really establishes the political will of the administration and where the direction the city is going to go, the priorities of the city. So I do think that the city council has a lot of power and authority in shaping the quality of life of the city through the budget. Also, I do think there's a critical role of the council that's not in the Home Rule Charter, and that is to advocate, educate, facilitate, and navigate for their constituents. And you cannot create sound policy or legislation unless you do those primary things first.
Thank you. Okay, the second question, this is also 30 seconds each, and let's start with Mr. Knox this time. How do you plan to engage with the residents of your district if you are elected?
Just like I do now as a regular citizen, I attend my community meetings. I am out in the community actively when it comes to standing up to be a voice when City Hall wants to relocate in Armstrong Park, for example. I am already engaged with my elected officials, not just with the city council, but also at the state level. And I'm engaged already with people who are cultural bearers in my neighborhood of Tremay. I'm engaged with real community activists, not the people who just go around and say they're committing activists by giving a turkey at a holiday, for example, or for doing those small tribute things that we all do on the record. So I'm engaged on the ground, root level, brass roof level, and in the active level.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moss, of course, Mr. Mosgrove.
Yes, I will engage the way I've done over the last two years as a staffer in the Mayor's Neighborhood Engagement Office, District A. I've committed to being a very, throughout the campaign, I've committed to being at every neighborhood association meeting every month as one way to be highly accessible and responsive. District C hasn't had that level of accessibility in many years, and there is only one councilperson presently on the council who does this type of thing already, and that is District A's councilperson. I will do the same, and I'll be highly accessible and responsive to constituents. Those are key metrics for my service as a staffer and as a councilperson.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Perez.
Yeah, one of the first things I'm going to do if I get elected is reach out to neighborhood and community leaders, even those who maybe did not support me, and cultivate relationships with them and be attentive to their needs and desires. I will attend neighborhood association meetings as well as other community meetings. I'll have regular listening sessions and meetings separate from council meetings, and I'll report back on where we are. I won't just listen to you, I'll respond to you. So I'll be responsive as well. I'd also like to have officers on both banks of the river.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Ms. Waiters.
I guess, I think I would have a three-prong, maybe a three-prong approach, which would be number one, know my district, know my district, the actual taking a tour of the physical district and the different neighborhoods along with community partners and the legislative delegations. The second thing I would do is inventory all the resources and projects and funding that is currently in the, you know, in the district now and the planned projects and funding resources that's coming to the district and educate the community and the neighborhoods and the constituents about that. I think a lot of these things that are coming in and the projects that are going on is so many, and people can't give really good input unless they are educated in what's there.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. King.
Yes, I will do what I've done during my time working for District C, which is being a constituent service director. I'm going to the neighborhood meetings, setting up a satellite office in Algiers for the residents on the West Bank, set up a satellite office for the residents on the East Bank. Those are things I've been doing, men and women, young men and women. So it won't be anything new for me, just a continuation I've been doing for several years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Question three, this is again 30 seconds each, and let's start with, this time with Mr. Mosgrove. What are your top three priorities for your district or for the city if elected to serve? Top three priorities.
Sure. My top three are reducing crime, both in the short term and long term, so that this decades-long challenge becomes much less of a challenge. Citizens deserve to be safe, and young people deserve to have hope and opportunity. I want to improve economic development strategies for significant job creation, both within the district and the city as a whole, and I want to improve quality and efficiency across all city services.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you.
I think the first priority is addressing crime. So public safety, I would put at the top of the list. That is related to improving quality of life. That kind of touches everything. I think we begin doing that by enforcing the laws that we have on the books. That would generate money as well. We're letting a lot of money drop out of our pockets by not enforcing these fines. I also think we need to make sure that the basic city services we pay for are being provided. It's very sad that that's an issue, but I mean, it really is.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Waiters, top three priorities.
The top three priorities would be to, I'm sorry, I thought it was the assets of the district, the priorities.
What are your top three priorities for the district or for the city?
For the city and the district is number one, ensuring that we have sound infrastructure in the city of New Orleans, because I think that it's been unveiled that we thought, what we thought we had, we did not have. So focusing on that. Also focusing on the barriers for economic development for small businesses in the city. Looking at safety and permitting processes, zoning processes, and things like that to provide that. And number three, just to actually know my district.
Okay, thank you, Mr. King.
Top priorities is to get rid of or reduce illegal dumping and blight. Once you do that, you can make your area, your city and district attractive for economic development. And once you, once you get economic development rolling, then you can start to look at public safety and crime reduction. People commit crimes more because they don't have the funds to live. So once you create economic development, you give them those funds, and that in turn reduces crime. So those are my three top priorities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Knox.
Thank you. My top three would be to address the crime issue. Public safety is number one. And in addition to that, I want to focus more on the underlying root causes of crime. That is, we know we have a high unemployment rate among African-American males. We know we have a high dropout rate among African-American males. We know we have a high rate of African-American males involved in the justice system. So we need to address all of those things, not just the crime, but the underlying issues that continue and perpetuate the crime. I also want to address small businesses. I am a small business owner. The process is sometimes complicated. There's too much taxes on a small business that's just trying to get its start, and we need to look at how we can make and streamline the business process for more entrepreneurs.
Okay.
Last thing would be.
Thank you. That's, that's 30 seconds. Okay. Thank you so much. And that's everybody, correct? Yes. Okay, we're going to move to the next round. These answers, let's go with one minute each for each of these questions. And we, why don't we start with Mr. Perez this time? Question is, what specific things have you done in your district that demonstrate your ability to positively impact your district as a councilperson? Mr. Perez, one minute.
That's a great question. First, I would say that I co-founded and have been served as president of a nonprofit organization called the LGBT Plus Archives Project, which fulfills a very important need, and that is reclaiming, recovering, preserving the legacy and contributions of our LGBT culture bearers. So I'm proud of that. I have also developed a tour guide curriculum at Loyola University and partly at Delgado to make tour guides in our city more professional. I'm proud of that. I've been active in all my neighborhood groups. I live in the French Quarter, so I'm very active with not only the neighborhood groups like French Quarter Citizens and VC Pora, but I'm also a volunteer for the French Quarter Management District, as well as the French Quarter Business Association. I've also taught English at Xavier University. So those are just a few of the things I've done.
Okay, great. Ms. Waiters.
One of the things that I've done is, as a commissioner on the RTA board, I've worked really closely and led efforts with, along with the board, input into the Strategic Mobility Plan and the New Link Program, which is a whole network redesign, and community input for the ferry terminal. So community engagement, that. Under libraries and literacy, I've worked as a, as a member of the, a board member of the Library Foundation. I have created, I've built up a board, reestablished and really saved the fund that was dwindling as a result of the issues that happened to the New Orleans Public Library Foundation, and returned the foundation back with an increased fund, back to the mission of the library, the original mission of the library, to move forward to raise money and to continue to fund the library programming and literacy. Also, with Algiers Economic Development as the executive director, I really did, I reached out and supported small business through networking and aligning down with regional partners and the city partners, and I hosted a lot of concerts and bought thousands of people. On fire.
We need to wrap that up. Okay.
Two million dollars.
Okay, we've, we've hit a minute, Ms. Waiters. Okay, let's move, just wanted to make sure we're fair to everybody. Mr. King.
Thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I will continue to do what I've been doing for years, that's supplying meals to families in need during the holidays, that is, being a mentor to our young men and women, being a mentor for the Silverback Society, being a mentor for the heroes of New Orleans, providing positive outlets for our seniors, providing them with bingo games, things to make them feel like they're part of society, Christmas parties, bingo games, again, things that I've been doing, not just since I've been running or qualified to run for, for the past couple of years. Continue to help with COVID relief. I helped sponsor several COVID drives in Algiers or throughout District C, and most recently, post Ida. I got my family to safety and came back every day to help provide supplies for those in need, whether it be water, ice, food, provide transportation. So again, I just want to continue to do what I've been doing, because that's what my heart is, is providing a service in my district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Knox.
Thank you. Well, for six years, I served as a city commissioner on Historic District Landmark Commission, and in that capacity, I served for District C at large. I served in a capacity that allowed me to address the blight issue as well as the illegal dumping. Also, in that capacity, the main purpose was to preserve the historical architecture and fabric of our historic communities. I also served as the Director for Community Engagements and Grants for the New Orleans Police and Justice Foundation. I'm the only candidate that has a degree in law enforcement that actually worked with NOPD, US Attorney, US Attorney's Office for the Southeastern District, for state probation and parole and other entities. Also, I served as an Economic Development Chair for my Neighborhood Association, as well as the Land Use Chair. I started several small businesses, both located in District C. Not only is it a small business, but I also use it as a community gathering place where we do COVID drives, shots, and a number of activities that we host for the youth. We only just started beginning to tap into our youth engagement, the higher at-risk youth.
Okay.
So those are the things that I do right now.
Thank you. And Mr. Mosgrove.
I've been vice president and president of my neighborhood civic association tackling neighborhood issues. I've served on the Algiers Neighborhood Presidents Council, where I pushed for attention for Algiers from elected leaders. I led a task force of neighborhood association presidents culminating in the writing of an Algiers Improvement Plan that the chair then presented to city council candidates in the last council election cycle. I'm the vice president of Kiwanis-Algiers, a service organization focused on helping young people develop into community service-minded adults. Kiwanis-Guy is the key clubs at local schools, and I've supported and participated in a number of our service projects, including bikes for books to encourage young people to read. I participate in community cleanups, including those with Algiers One, which I was a founding member of, and I belong to COPS Four, which raises money for equipment for our police officers. I'm a zealous, decades-long supporter of small and underrepresented business owners, and I spend my money thus, and I spend my money locally. Of course, I've been a public servant for 20 years and a 30-year advocate for change in New Orleans, including in, right out the gate from my college days in Boston, I participated in the creation of a book called The Challenge of Change.
We need to wrap it up. Okay, thank you so much. That was, that's everybody for question one, and great to hear all these backgrounds. Question two, this is also of the second round, this is also one minute per candidate, and let's start with Ms. Waiters this time. The Urban League supports, coaches, and trains small business owners and entrepreneurs. As a councilperson, how would you support small business owners in your district, like the ones we serve every day? Ms. Waiters.
First off, I would know who the small businesses are in my district. There's hundreds of small businesses in the district, and I think it's very important to know who they are and to give them a voice at the table. I would develop an advisory committee for the small businesses so they can, you know, on the ground, know what their issues and barriers are, so we can develop policies and connect them to resources. And then I would identify resources for them on, you know, financial resources and opportunities to increase capacity for their workforce or any other barriers that they may have. And that's it.
Hey, thank you, Mr. King.
I would support small business like myself. I'm a small business owner by doing things I've been doing. I'm a vice president of Algiers Economic Development Foundation, where our sole purpose is to support small business throughout Algiers. I'm a member, a board member of the Old Algiers Main Street. Again, our goal is to help support small businesses and see that they thrive. We realize that small businesses are Uh, we realize that small businesses are the backbone of this um of this economy in New Orleans. Uh, things also important to educate our small business owners, not so much on what to do, how to make money, but how to get money. For uh, for instance, um, a lot of people aren't aware of what the opportunity zone is. Um, they don't know what opportunity zone is, how can they take advantage of it? So those are some things that we need to do, but I I really want to lean on the education aspect. That is very important. You can know how to fry the best food and cook the best food and design the best clothes, but without access to capital, it's going to be tough to thrive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knox.
Thank you. And and this is a very uh important question uh and of interest to me as a small business owner. And uh, one of the things that I think uh we first need to do is get with organizations like yourself, partner organizations, and do some coordinations around how we educate uh those who are interested in starting small businesses and those who are currently in small businesses. One thing I think we also need to address uh big elephant in the room is that small business of color are funded way less or disproportionately than other businesses. And so we need to figure out the best way that we can provide access to capital that's targeted to uh that uh particular group and not be afraid to do so, because we know during this pandemic, more than fifty percent of small black-owned businesses have failed. And there has been no lifeline thrown to them, and those businesses are gone and not coming back. So we need to address that issue. Also, I would want to uh look at how do we uh create synergy uh from uh the high school level to the college level and graduation from those levels and how those people can become the entrepreneurs that they desire from a very early age. So those things are are things that I would want to address uh as a council member, as well as uh how to get entrepreneurial uh skills and training back into high schools.
Okay, terrific. Uh, Mr. Mosgrove.
Sure. As council member, anything that I can do to expand access to capital, markets, training, skilled employees, public safety, and anything that supports small business, I will do. As mentioned earlier, I've long advocated for improvements in city performance. For small businesses, improving the permitting, zoning, and other regulatory processes that they have to presently endure would improve services to small and aspiring businesses, while encouraging others to pursue a small business future and to do so in Orleans Parish. Also, lowering the cost of doing business is very important, starting with Entergy's and the Sewage and Water Board's high billings. And for thirty years, as part of my economic development vision for my hometown, I've always believed that building small business and entrepreneurialism are key strategies for diversifying the economy. Building our economy from the ground up taps into human creativity, improves our chances for equitable economic opportunity, and will result in a business climate that is more committed to New Orleans and to community needs at the grassroots level.
Thank you. And um, great, Mr. Perez.
Well, the first thing I would do is encourage the city to take a lesson from the Urban League. And by that, I mean that we need to make make it easier for people to open and do business. Uh, we need to encourage them. We need to make it easier for them to understand the rules and everything else. And then I can tell you, as a small business owner myself, it's not, that's not always the case. Uh, so for those that are up and running, I think we need to look at private public partnerships to incentivize innovation and expansion. Uh, I think we also need to look at non-traditional city hall hours, because a lot of our businesses and our economy is nighttime-based. I fully support being uh city government being accessible and accountable and responsive uh to businesses that operate uh during non-traditional hours.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move on to question three. The, again, this is one minute, and let's start with Mr. King this time. The Urban League and the Power Coalition advocate for racial equity every day. By racial equity, we mean just, fair, um, excuse me, by racial equity, we mean just and fair inclusion into a society in which all people, regardless of their race or ethnicity, can participate, prosper, and reach their full potential. How would you, as a councilperson, fight for fairness and equity? Mr. King, one minute.
To to have fairness and and equity, you first have to start at the beginning, which I think is education. Now, we're not running for school board, I'm running for city council, but I'm proud to say that I have the backing of Mr. Ethan Ashen, a school board member, and Mr. J.C. Romero, so I'm willing to work with them and ready to work with them on how to better educate our young people, which is our most precious resource. Um, another way to get uh equity is to, again, educate people on opportunities that's available. How can you um apply and profit from SB SBA loan where when you don't have a bank account, when you don't know how to get access to um those who are giving out these SBA loans, these very low-interest loans that people, you know, really springboard into other things and have a better quality of life? And and racial equity, I was a public defender. Um, so I see, I was on the front line of those who were arrested. Of those who were arrested disproportionately, and I helped fight for the rights of those. I did that for several years as intern as a actual public defender. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Knox.
Thank you. And uh, that's a good question and a challenging question. I think um uh for me, uh, when I worked for the Department of Veterans Affairs, and it was shortly after the uh George Floyd incident, I founded and created a uh anti-racism committee in the Social Work Service or Social Work Department of Department of Veterans Affairs to address the very issue that you're talking about, equity and uh access to uh higher pay and things of that nature at the Department of Veterans Affairs. What I would do as a councilperson is to do something similar. We need to look at race matter in this city and not be afraid. We know that crime is high, and we also know that ninety percent of the crime is committed by people of color. We know that, but we don't want to talk about it for whatever the reason may be. But we need to talk about it so we can address those underlying issues as to why uh that is disproportionately so high. We also know that uh uh there's not uh any uh fairness uh when individuals who have criminal records go and apply for employment. Uh, I hire individuals, and I don't ask if they've been arrested, and I don't ask if they've been uh in in prison or whatever the case may be, because my attitude is, once you serve your debt to society, you're done. You shouldn't be stigmatized uh for the rest of your life. And as a council member, I want to ensure that businesses don't act in that manner, and if they do, they should pay a penalty for it.
Okay, Mr. Mosgrove.
Yes, uh, everything I've done in my advocacy and my public service years is infused with my core values and my core beliefs. And one of my core values is inclusion, and one of my core beliefs is the dignity of every human being. These are bedrocks of how I see the world, process the world, think about the world, and and work in public service. They're actually the foundations to why decades ago I chose uh to work in in service to my community. Uh, budgeting is a way to build equity into the system. Knowing your district, knowing what the needs are, and advocating for necessary resources are important services from a council member. Uh, I'm committed to a level of engagement with the district that is broad, wide, and frequent. And I've written about the importance of rewarding talent in New Orleans, what you know instead of who you know. And I've I've argued for that for decades. It's critical that we finally get to building an environment where talent from New Orleans is rewarded so that it can exercise that talent in New Orleans instead of in other cities. And it's also important that the city, city and council contracts are awarded based on talent and fair, equal levels of inclusionary opportunity. Uh, the city's DBA program has never truly reached a high level of performance and is often not enforced within the city processes and the contract process. That needs to change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perez.
Yeah, I think uh the the first thing we need to do is elect public officials who truly understand the difference between equity and equality. Uh, a lot of people get those two things confused. Uh, as a member of two minorities, I I am keenly aware of that difference and how important equity is. Um, I also think our system of tax giveaways doesn't work for regular people. It favors those who already have a lot of money. We need to change that. Uh, and I would support tax priorities that help, not hurt working people and the most vulnerable among us. Uh, I also support uh minimum wage increase. I also support affordable housing. And uh, well, I could talk a lot about this, but you get the idea.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And Ms. Waiters.
Um, yes, I think that we ha- as a councilperson, um, I would have to understand the deep systemic issues, long-term systemic issues that impact our communities. Um, and when it comes to education, when it comes to workforce, and when it comes to housing and access to capital for small businesses, because it's just not that simple. It's it's a very, very complex issue. And you have to have or be boots on the ground and listen to people who are going through this, listen to their stories, and create sound policy through that. As a single mother, raising a son and going through college and working my way through college and not having access to opportunities that I should, or seeing my son, who's now, you know, a black male, um, owning his own business, confronting many barriers, is, I can understand the frustration. So I think as a councilperson, you have to know, number one, the policies and the systemic issues and the barriers, and hear the stories of the people on the ground and be able to create sound policy for that and bring people in, partners uh for a holistic approach.
Okay, terrific. Thank you all. Uh, let's move on to the next question. Number four, and we're going to start with Mr. Knox this time. Again, one minute. Workers' rights and fair wages are priorities for the Power Coalition and the Urban League. Do you support a living wage and other policies that center people and workers' rights, such as a fifteen-dollar minimum wage? Mr. Knox.
Yes, thank you. And yes, I do support uh the living wage. In fact, I uh pay my employees almost the amount of fifteen dollars. I pay my employees thirteen, twenty-five um as a barista. And what's so significant about that is that's more than what some police officers, some firemen, and some EMS workers uh are getting paid, and that's a shame. Uh, my barista shouldn't make more to serve coffee when uh police officers serve their lives every day as well as firemen. So as a councilperson, I definitely would want to uh support a living wage uh and also be sensitive to uh smaller businesses owner to phase it in over time. Uh, I also believe that uh we need to uh look at not just the living wage, but look at how uh we can provide some benefits, such as uh healthcare and childcare, as well as uh some transportation for many of our workers who can't afford to uh even pay to get to work. So I'm all about the living wage. I support it wholeheartedly as a small business owner, and I would definitely support it as a city councilperson.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosgrove.
Yes, I absolutely support a living wage and support workers' rights. Um, as a son of a a working man and woman, uh, we succeed with individual effort, but also as a team. And and good management, creative ideas in business and capital are are all important, but the efforts by workers are an equally important part of business and profit. So uh, workers build the products and get the products to customers. Um, in two thousand and fourteen, I helped with poly- policy positions, which included raising the minimum wage in New Orleans. And at that time, advocating for Hurricane Katrina recovery, that was more equitable. Unfortunately, my candidate lost in his efforts. Uh, but however, during that time, the research was clear that raising the minimum wage, even in one municipality, while surrounding this municipalities did not, did not lead to the loss of businesses and jobs where the minimum wage was raised. Uh, that long-held argument about an increase in in causing, about an increase causing loss of businesses and jobs is not really supported by the research. Uh, increased wages really do increase the throughput of of money uh that goes through an economy, is good for an economy. And finally.
Okay.
Uh, advocate.
We're at one minute. Thank you so much.
Fair enough.
Okay, Mr. Perez.
Absolutely, yes. And I will do whatever it takes to make that happen. I don't need sixty seconds on this one. It is a clear yes for me.
Okay. Um, thank you for keeping us on schedule then. Or her waiters, this is wa- Ms. Waiters.
Yes, absolutely. I do uh, I do support a living wage, fifteen dollars an hour, but I don't think we need to stop at fifteen dollars an hour. I think that we need to ensure that there's growth in career pathways and training for those individuals, that they're not just stagnant because, you know, the uh inflation and 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 opportunities for growth. I think that's very important. I do think we need to provide benefits for them as well to provide and ensure that there are a support there for them to get to work, like a for, you know, like a quality trend in transportation, uh, education and affordable housing. And it has to be a holistic approach to it, but fifteen dollars an hour is a great start. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. King.
I want to see a um, the mi- the minimum wage grow from fifteen dollars an hour. Right now, it's seven twenty-five. Uh, we are the same as Mississippi, and we're less than Arkansas. I don't like being the same anything with Mississippi. Um, inflation happens, the loaf of bread is higher, since COVID, gas is higher, a used car now costs more or the same uh the same as a brand-new car. So it needs to grow with the economy, so fifteen today needs to grow because our last um min- minimum wage increase was two thousand and nine. You can't live off two thousand and nine thousand, two thousand and twenty-one. I also want to see more benefits for families. So I'm a father of four, so maybe more uh paid leave time for fathers after childbirth. That's very near and dear to me, again, being a a father of four children. So uh, definitely for for um living wage, a a constant higher minimum wage and more benefits for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's, let's move on to the next question, and let's start with Mr. Mosgrove this time. Again, one minute. The New Orleans City Council is unique in that it is the regulatory body for Entergy New Orleans. There are community concerns about raising enter- uh, excuse me, raising energy costs, particularly following Hurricane Ida. How will you ensure that communities do not bear the brunt of corporate costs? Mr. Mosgrove.
Surely, uh, Entergy has been allowed to lose focus on what is most important to them, their customers. And as with uh so many things, the the rising expenses and the worsening service are just bad value to customers. Uh, Entergy needs to get rid of power sources that they own, that are expensive, don't provide reliable service, and are costly to us customers because they pass on those inefficiency costs. Uh, its power sources need to modernize, because many of uh these modern methods, such as solar storage, are cheaper to produce energy and therefore cheaper for customers. Uh, large-scale weatherization for neighborhoods would also help in lowering costs. And Entergy has to be better uh maintained and strengthen its system on the front end uh so we don't have to worry about how responsive they are in getting electricity back on after after their systems fail. The city council must be more vigilant and more diligent about doing its job as regulators. The relationship with Entergy has long been too cozy. Uh, with actual regulation and high standards for Entergy leadership, the city council needs to regulate and quickly get us to the place we need to be without a long and expensive legal battle that will have no real clear endgame regarding better service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perez.
Yeah, I think uh we need to take a really hard look at revoking Entergy's monopoly in New Orleans. We need to look at that. Uh, I think we need to fire the council's utility advisors. They are clearly in the back pocket of Entergy. Uh, I do support annual independent audits of not only management, but also spending to find out where these uh rates that we're paying are going, where the money's going. I will oppose any rate increases. I'd like to decrease our energy bills. And when we find energy, Entergy, we need to make the fines really hurt. A couple of years ago, when they paid a bunch of actors to go down to the city hall to the council hearing, they got fined uh five million dollars. Well, that's a drop in the bucket. They made one point four billion last year. You've got to make fines hurt. We also need to really push for greener, more renewable energy. And Entergy currently has fought every effort on that front. There is an entire new industry waiting to happen. We can diversify our economy and mitigate the climate crisis by moving toward green energy. We've got to do it. I want to be Entergy's worst nightmare.
Okay, uh, thank you. And Ms. Waiters.
Well, I'll keep this one simple, because I've been, the city council is the regulator for uh, you know, regulates utilities and is the regulator for Entergy. And they invest a lot of dollars in a in in a utility office as well as utility consultants. Um, and there is a, there is a committee as well on the on the council. So I ki- I'm kind of confused, because I don't understand why this is all coming up after the fact. Um, this is nothing new. Questions should have been asked, uh, appropriate questions should have been asked, accountability about investment in the infrastructure that ratepayers had paid, had to pay for the last, uh, you know, I don't know, five years. I can't remember when the last increase was, but that should have been known. We should say, where did that money go? Wha- what investment did you make in the infrastructure, on the grid? Detail question, but we have consultants in place, so I don't understand why this is coming up now. It should have been, they should have been, you know, proactive instead of reactive, and it seems like a lot of reactive things are going on.
Okay, Mr. Mr. King.
Yes, the uh all recovery is costing the state over four billion dollars, costing the city over a hundred fifty million dollars. That's that's ridiculous to ask people who were trying to put the pieces back together, who were trying to put a blue top on the roof to 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 foot that bill. I think that's an insult. We're going to need um, we're going to need to have federal and and state support to make this happen. We're going to need, um, we're going to need to have federal and state support to make this happen. So we won't have to foot this bill. I think it's important to have those relationships. I would say I have those relationships being endorsed by Governor John Bell Edwards, being endorsed by Congressman Troy Carter, lean on those relationships and get their support to help us fight because we can't always fight with the federal government. We need those who have more resources and have their relationships to help us not fit this $150 million bill. We just, we just can't afford to have the people in this city do that. Thank you.
Okay, and finally, Mr. Knox?
Thank you. Uh, the problem, as I said, is, uh, energy is a monopoly. And everything everybody said I can agree with, but at the end of the day, it's difficult to regulate a monopoly when it's the only game in town. You're actually beholden to what energy is doing and will continue to do. We decided a long time ago in this country that monopolies are inherently bad and they produce heavily bad products. And the only way to fix a monopoly is to bust it up. So my plan would be to do a review and to do a study to come in to see to determine how we can bring in more resources and more options for energy. And I want us to look at how we can use wind and solar as a cleaner version of energy and how that can force energy to become more competitive and more accountable to the residents of the city. Monopolies are bad and you cannot regulate a monopoly to make it comply. You have to bring in competition. It's the only way that monopolies are, can be accountable and to be responsible is to bring in more competition.
Okay, and our final question, we're going to start with Mr. Perez. New Orleans is receiving over $100 million in federal American Rescue Plan funding. What do you think the best use of these funds is to promote an equitable recovery from Hurricane Ida and from COVID?
Well, I think we need to make sure that money is spent wisely and learn some lessons from the past, especially after Katrina, where we didn't spend that federal money wisely. And by spending it wisely, I think we need to get it to the people who need it most, the marginalized, the disadvantaged, the underprivileged. I think we need to help people, we need to address public health issues like opioid addiction, joblessness, food security. So we need to get that money into the hands of people who need it most, who can do the most for.
Okay, Ms. Waiters?
Yes, I do think that we have to have really a robust community input plan for this, to know what to invest it in. That's the first thing. But I do think that it, it has a lot of, I guess, a way to interpret how to use the funds and how people are impacted by COVID because a lot of people lost their jobs as a result of COVID, lost their businesses as a result of COVID. So I see there's opportunities to provide housing and sustainable and, and support businesses as well. I see it as an opportunity to offset some of the deficits in our budget for public safety because it did take a lot of our resources and our healthcare and public safety resources. And we had to spend more money on that. So I do think public input, community engagement, a plan for it is critical. But I do think that we have a lot of flexibility and we need to educate the public first on what is the American Rescue Plan and what is the criteria before they can provide real public engagement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. King?
I think the money should be, should be put in the pants of the small business owners and the, the people who need it the most. Families need the money to get food in their mouth just to live. Small businesses need the money just to make payroll, just to, just to provide healthcare for their employers. Uh, my biggest fear is that Ida will finish the job that Katrina did not finish, which means it's going to displace and move our, our poor, our, I'm hate to say poor, but our, our African Americans don't have the means to, to provide after the storm. You lose, you lose your job due to Ida and/or COVID. You can't pay your rent. You got to move away. You can't pay your mortgage. You got to move away. So we need to make sure that those funds are given directly or that people have the education, again, education to get those funds. Because without those funds, we're going to lose our most precious resource and that's our people and our culture and our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knox?
Thank you. I, I think we have to set priorities in terms of how we want to budget this money that's coming down the pipe. First thing we need to address is that there are a lot of hurting people in this city. And they didn't just start hurting. They've been hurting for a very long time. And we need to come around to be a more compassionate city to address those underlying causes as to why in the city of New Orleans we continue to have these cycles of impoverished people who can't, for whatever reason, bail their way out of it. Uh, the next thing that I would want to focus on would be recovering our economy. And the only way that we can do that is if we come together and engage with small businesses, big businesses, and have a full transparent conversation to talk about reopening businesses that have been shuttered and how do we diversify this economy that we have that we steer away from the focus on tourism, but to bring in more medical technology and, and other type industries so that we can be a more diverse economy and won't be as hard hit when the next disaster comes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moss Grove?
Sure. It's an opportunity with this funding and future federal funding to take care of some, some difficult needs that the city often struggles to fund. Some folk I for me are housing, transportation, drainage, infrastructure and small business sustainability. Those are key investments, period, without crisis, but especially in our community attempts to recover from the wallops of COVID-19 and Hurricane Ida. Investments in affordable housing, either direct or indirect, will ease financial burdens on families that are suffering through the pre-disaster economy as well as the post-COVID and Ida economy. Using federal dollars to update assets, assets and transportation and infrastructure would improve the function of our government services and strengthen the future promise for us as New Orleanians in our community. And support for small businesses to recover losses, to stay in business or to return to business helps our economy and those seeking jobs with those, with those small businesses. Thank you.
Terrific. Uh, thank you. And now we're going to move to closing statements with one minute. And let's start with Ms. Waiters.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the Urban League and the Power Coalition for having me, having us to do this forum tonight. I just want to say that we are really at an inflection point and critical time in this city and this district. And it's so important that we hire someone who can hit the ground running on day one, who has the relationships, who has the ability to build coalitions and bring people together for equitable and innovative solutions. And that would be me. I, I have a diverse array of experience in public, private sector and I bring that to the table. I, so I would ask the, you, you for your support. I have a proven record of leadership and experience. And if you go to my website at Waiters for District C, please go to the website and look at my experience. It is a proven and I do have results on there. So thank you very much and I appreciate your support. Number 51, City Council District C. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. King?
Thank you again, Urban League and the Power Coalition. I'm the only candidate with, with the most recent experience working in District C, the very district that we're all trying to be the council member of. For years on the ground, for years I've had boots on the ground doing work in my community. I haven't just started in the past few, few weeks, a few years, a few months. I asked everyone to go check out our social media page to see who's been doing it for years, not just recently. Relationships, again, endorsed by Governor John Bell Edwards, Congressman and former Councilmember Troy Carter, former Councilmember James Carter, two people who had this position who knows what it takes and they believe that I'm the best person of all those applying for the job to have the job. Endorsed by our District Attorney, someone who I had to work with to reduce crime in our city. So not just those endorsements, but community leaders on both sides of the river. That's my, one I'm most proud of, the ones I'm most proud of. That's who you help support your prayers to make me the next council member of District C. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Knox?
Thank you to the Urban League as well. That's the Power Coalition hosting this event. I'm the only candidate who can literally say has been battle-tested. I've served in the United States Marine Corps. I served in combat. I'm the only candidate who has the experience to address the issues that are facing this district today. Law enforcement, public safety, crime is rampant. I'm the only one who's addressed blight. I'm the only one who has a legitimate, uh, small business and who has started multiple small businesses. I'm the only one who's worked at politics at all three levels, national, state and local. I'm the only candidate who is not intimidated to speak up and speak truth to power. We heard people say that they've been working at the city council. It's perplexing to me as if they worked at the city council while we still have all the same problems that we have today. They had an opportunity to address the same issues that we're talking about today when they worked at the city council. Unlike everyone else in this city, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. And I'm sick and tired of the political machine unlearning people. And it's the same old people to run for these offices and be a puppet and a parrot of what the political machine want them to say and do. It's time out and it's time for change. Both of us are not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moss Grove?
Thank you, Urban League of Louisiana and the Power Coalition for this evening. I'm Stephen Moss Grove. My core values and beliefs are strong and my passion for service to our community is longstanding and immense. I've exhibited my love for my community for decades in whatever way I could and through whatever door opened in my professional and civic life and in my life decisions overall. It's not always been easy. I serve well as a caring and broad-minded native New Orleanian. I believe in knowing my community and being accessible and responsive. And I work hard for my fellow man and woman. There's much work still to be done, to be done in District C. And I'm running to bring independent leadership and thus real progress to the district and to the city. I believe that I have the right mix of independence and life and professional experience to serve all of District C very well. Thank you for the time and I would appreciate your vote on November 13. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Perez?
I'd like to begin closing by just reemphasizing my independence. I have not been anointed by the establishment to run. The only people who've asked me to run are neighbors and residents of the district. And I'm proud to do so because I believe I can make a difference. I will just quickly summarize a few things we didn't get to. I support renters' rights. I support free public broadband, internet access. I think we need to protect voting rights. I'm for criminal justice reform, including police accountability. I think we need expanded health coverage. I think we need to close the pay gap between the gender pay gap. And I'm all about fighting for the underdog and the least advantaged among us. I am proud to be independent. I am nobody's man but yours. And I want to fight for you at city hall. And that's why I'm running and asking for your vote and your support. Thank you.
Okay. Wow, what a terrific conversation. Thank you all for attending and thank you for participating and putting yourselves out there. I think we all learned a lot tonight. So if candidates for District C could turn off your cameras, you're welcome to stay. And if we can invite the candidates for District E to turn on their cameras, we will move right to the next round. And again, everyone for District E, please log on. I see Cindy Nguyen and I see Oliver Thomas. Is anybody else on from District E? Okay, well, let's, let's get right to it then. Uh, the candidates for District E, we have the incumbent Cindy Nguyen. We have Oliver Thomas, former council member, joining us. Also on the ballot are John Bagnaris, Mishaun Copeland, Vanessa Garrinder Johnson and Erin Miller. So that, that is the field. And if, let's just get right to the opening statements then. And let's start with Councilmember Nguyen. A one minute, excuse me, just one moment. Let me reset here. Yes, okay. One minute, we're going to start with one minute opening statements from the, the council, from the candidates and start with Cindy Nguyen.
Thank you so much. Thanks to the Power Coalition and Urban League of Louisiana for hosting this. Wake up, get the vote out for 2021. My name is Cindy Nguyen. I am the council member for District E where family always comes first. I've been working in the community for 20 years. Four years ago, voters of District E elected me to represent them. And let me just say this, I humbly accepted the position and have been working really hard. My team that I've assembled, as well as many community leaders, have tackled issue of quality life for our resident and we're going to continue to work hard. While we have faced a series of different events and challenges for the past three and a half years, but we've been at the forefront tackling the issue with our constituent and we're going to continue to do that. And again, I look forward to the conversation today of moving District E forward. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And Mr. Thomas, one minute, please.
First of all, thank you to the Power Coalition and to the Urban League. Can you see me?
Can.
That's okay, because I didn't see myself on the screen. Oliver Thomas, born and raised in the Lord and I thought, former councilman for District B, former city council president, former legislator of, of, of the year. It would be an honor to represent District E, the largest African-American municipal district in the Gulf South. It has the highest concentration of African-American middle class and African-American upper class of any municipal district in, in this state. It also has some of the greatest assets in this region. Bayou Sauvage, Stephanie, which is the largest wildlife preserve in North America. A 7,000 acre business and industrial park that sits within the district. And guess what else it has? 9.5 miles of coastline or beach, or beach line that should be an asset in this community. When I was a kid growing up, a ride to visit relatives and family in New Orleans East, it was like a vacation. Though my family couldn't afford vacations, we thought we may be moving on up to visit your relatives who invested in property. New Orleans East right now is, is number one in every bad thing associated with quality of life.
We need, we need to move to the questions. Thank you so much, Councilman Thomas. The first question, let's start with you, Councilman, Councilman Thomas. What do you think are the most important functions of a council person?
We have a strong mayor, a strong council form of government, Stephanie, you know, especially if a council member can count to four and count to five. You have seen city councils operate by using their charter duties and their charter responsibility to do what? Stephanie, affect the budget. You remember when we held up Mayor Mark Morial's budget because some things had to be done about crime? I think you wrote about that.
I did.
You remember when we held up, not to, not to hold hostage, not to be obstructive, but to get things done. You remember when we added collectors in the finance department, I think to Mayor Negan's budget, to go out and collect $18 million? You remember when the council used its subpoena power to get to the bottom of what was going on in the finance and the revenue agency? The city council is a strong part of government. It doesn't operate like it now. We need that for that balance.
Okay, Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, thank you for that question, Stephanie. And just to add on to the conversation, as my function as a council member, we regulate the budget as well as land use and zoning in which I use that power all the time to really embrace and entice development to our district, both in the east and the low nine, because we all know that the east were behind on development after Katrina. And then I also believe that as a council member, I should be representing the people's interests, the needs, the concerns that they have dealing with quality of life. And that's what we've been working, working with city departments to address blighted properties, overgrown lots, illegal dumping. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, we're in the, I should say, we're in the 32nd round. We're going to move to a one-minute round after this, but still 30 seconds. Start with Councilmember Nguyen. How do you plan to engage with the residents of your district if you are reelected?
Well, good question, Stephanie. Since I've been in office, that's three and a half years ago. I launched Facebook Live. Last night I hosted my 356 Facebook Live where I'm on, on a consistent base where people can connect with me. I host monthly coffee and conversation on the third Saturday of the month. I'm accessible. People in my district have access to my personal number. And that's what we've been doing since day one that we've been in office.
Okay, and Mr. Thomas?
I want to engage with them around policy. Uh, I want to engage with them about how do we begin to reconstruct and rebuild this district? We've only had one new business move to the New Orleans Business Park in the last several years, only one. So we have to, we have to engage them. What are their needs? What do they want? What do they want around police protection? What do they want around zoning? How do we build off of Nassau and Meeshu? How do we build off New Orleans East Hospital? How do we build off that, that, that X or that cross in Reed Street, which gives, on Reed and Lake Forest, which gives us some of the biggest assets in this municipal district? I'm going to talk to the resident-
I'm going to talk to the residents about not just their concerns, how do we make it grow? We're dying. We need to grow.
Okay. And question three, I think we're going to go to one minute on this because we, since we have a smaller field this time, we can maybe talk a little more. And let's start with Mr. Thomas here. What are your top three priorities for your district and for the city if you are elected to serve?
Well, of course, if you can't be safe, you can't be anything. And right now, as a candidate for District E, several years ago, when Chief Michael Harrison was asked to participate in the PERF Conference. That's the Police Executive Research Forum, a national organization that deals with the top 50 cities in America. He was asked to select a citizen, Stephanie, to attend that conference with him, someone who understood policing, who had been actively involved in, in budgeting. And guess who that citizen was? It was me. We worked on the 21st Century Policing Plan, how labor and manpower should be used in cities moving forward. So for me, I think the way we amend District E, it can't be the same as other districts. It has to be landmass. Times calls for service, times population, times crime. Too much ground to cover to do it the way we do other districts. And then economic development. What are those economic development things that the folks in this district not only want, but what we can get through enhanced zoning? Take a look at the CZO, overlay the master plan again. Is it giving us 21st century opportunities to give it the businesses they want, not the things we can just pluck that are easy to do? Let's grow. We're not growing. We're dying.
Okay, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Three priorities.
Yes, yes. So overall, it's improving the quality of life. And that's what we've been doing since day one. I mean, a lot of this issue happened before I came into office. And so, but we've been working on land use zoning to attract the economic development, working with the administration on dealing with blighted property. You know, outside from Optimus, we were able to return two commercial property that was sitting since Katrina, which is the Caveman Hotel, which is the Lake Forest Senior Manor, two major corridors that's along the I-10 that people have been very distressed about. So I think that is growth for our community. But we also got to recognize that for the past almost a year and a half, we've been facing a pandemic as well as Hurricane Ida. The market has been impacted heavily by it, but we didn't stop working. We continue to make sure that we focus on the needs of our people, saving lives, keeping people safe, but also working in other areas to make sure that we attract economic development, working with our law enforcement agency to make sure that families are safe, and then growing our community and getting us ready when the market is moving.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to one and a half minutes for these questions, since these are really important topics and we can have a good conversation going. And the next question, we'll start with Councilmember Nguyen. What specific things have you done in your district that demonstrate your ability to positively impact the district as a council person?
I think one of the things that I've done is that I've been very consistent, transparent, accountable, and honest. People kept access to me. When we are working on moving the district forward, we do have committee established. So the community engagement that I didn't share with you earlier, that is not just Facebook Live, but we have community meetings that talks about the land use, the, the opportunity that's coming and engaging the resident. One thing that I've also demonstrated to my community that when I make a promise, I deliver. I promised four, four years ago that we're not, we're going, I'm going to look into the family dollar, dollar tree because we were saturated with the family dollar, dollar tree. I intend to do legislation within a year to put a restriction on family dollar, dollar tree. I made a promise to work on Lincoln Beach, a beach that was closed for 50 years. We are now working to reopen Lincoln Beach with $5 million set aside. I also promised to work on the former Six Flags site, in which we're now at the proposed site with two firms, two groups that are bidding for the Six Flags site. So what I've been able to demonstrate is transparency, honesty, integrity, accountability to the work that we've been serving, not just in the east, in the lower nine, Venetia now and Lake Castle.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Oh, well, first of all, one of the things Stephanie and Power Coalition, Urban League, it's important to know. If you keep it up with real estate and investment, reports in the Advocate, reports all over, the real estate market is booming. Investment is booming. If you talk to real estate agents right now, there's great opportunity out there in terms of property, just not in New Orleans East. So I mean, that's a fact. It's not my political fact. That's a fact. So you have to, you know, it's not a bad time right now to grow and invest. I'd like to use my experience. You remember the Lower Garden District Renaissance Plan, which took the Camp Street ramp down, soup kitchens and one night stays and made it what was in better homes than Gardens. Gardenswood is now one of, one of America's comeback neighborhoods. The Lower St. Charles Corridor Plan that took those bars and dives and stays. And what do we have now? Houston's, Del Monaco's. When you know how to use zoning and planning, when you know how to use the CZO and the master plan, it's about planning and progressing for the future. The late Lonny Hewitt of Hewitt Architects, you remember what the old OC Haley Dry Street used to be like? I asked him to do a pro bono rendering years ago. And from that rendering, Handelman Building, Venus Bodys Gardens, the old Gators, which is now the Jazz Market, look what the zoning did there. And then, of course, working with the churches. On a new home, new open first team manual to do affordable housing infill within that area. And of course, to work with X, which gave us several housing initiatives throughout that district. Would love to be able to do the same thing here in District E and the Lower Ninth.
Okay, thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Thomas. The Urban League supports, coaches, and trains small businesses as small business owners and entrepreneurs. As a council person, how would you support small business owners in your district like the one? Excuse me, I'm sorry. How would you support small business owners in your district like the ones we serve every day? I apologize for that.
Access to capital, you know, access to resources. Small businesses are the backbone of America. We talk a lot about our Fortune 500s. But we know most people work at mom and pop as small businesses. I'd also like to get rid of some of the myths, Stephanie. We celebrate women owned businesses as startups. But you know, folk don't deal with facts all the time. Women owned businesses may be doing well in startups, but not having access to resources for stay up. If women are leading the way in starting a business, we need to make sure that they can stay open. The African American community, there's a large gap in disparity in earnings and wealth. We know that post Katrina. In many cases, disparity gap has grown in access to capital and business as well as earnings. We need to address that from a federal, state, and local level. And then one of the last things we can do is if we have a multi billion dollar tourism economy and hospitality economy, we need to make sure that local small businesses are attached to that community for the now and for the growth when it comes back. I've been convening with business people all over this region right now. They're excited about my campaign and they're excited about this movement. How do we incorporate small businesses into that, into going from that first visitor to the 19 million we had when we were setting records before COVID? That's the kind of stuff that needs to happen now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes, you know, while I hold meetings to make sure that there's always opportunity for a small business, but I could share, Stephanie, that in the midst of COVID-19, you know, I support, I support funding to make sure that our small businesses continue to stay open. I advocate for technical assistance because we all know that, you know, many small businesses, they don't have a person doing every, doing individual function. It's one person that does everything and providing and supporting our technical assistant. I know Urban League of Louisiana has really spearheaded and working with many of our small businesses in this region, making sure that they have that technical assistant, even at the Ida. Right now, what they're facing in reference to SBA damages for their businesses, how do they recover from the economic distress that they're in? And so making sure that they have that one-on-one assistant, but also continue to advocate for access to capital. Limited access to capital is extremely real for many of our minority business owner. It is not a secret at all. Just earlier this week, so I chaired the economic development for the New Orleans City Council. And something I continue to push with NOLA BA to make sure that we continue to focus on and creating a program that our small business owner, particularly our minority business owners, have access to capital. Still working on legislation. You know, one of the things I'm very proud is of that. And it may be small to other, but it's huge for many of our disadvantaged business enterprise. They're not DBEs. You know, they need to have equal business opportunity, just like everybody else.
Okay, thank you. And this next question will start with Councilmember Nguyen. The Urban League and the Power Coalition advocate for equity, for racial equity every day. By racial equity, we mean just and fair inclusion into a society in which all people, regardless of their race or ethnicity, can participate, prosper, and reach their full potential. How would you, as a council person, fight for fairness and equity? Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes, and thank you for that question. And something that is very dear to me because I, as a minority person, as an immigrant from Vietnam in 1975, you know, I'm very blessed to be here. And thanks to the US for giving us that opportunity. But something that I face every day, you know, in reference to inequity. You know, that the, the playing, the game is not played fairly when it comes to ethnicity. And so as a council member, since day one, has been pushing and advocating, you know, equally for all ethnicity. Making sure that, you know, if we're, if we're designing a program, that it needs to be designed with equitable, equitable lens, with fairness. And then we also got to make sure that we include the people. And I'm going to continue to do that work. We are working on several legislation, particularly around contracting, to make sure that the contracting guidelines are being fair and equitable. And that we're not allowing any particular contracts or just because they're the prime to get away with things. So we're, you know, all my work from quality of life to economic development to business opportunity goes to the lens of equity and fairness.
Thank you. Former Councilmember Thomas.
I mean, there's a little black boy from the Lower Ninth Ward. No one knows more about inequality and unfairness than the people I grew up with and still work with, toy with today. We know that African American men and women make less on the dollar than whites or any other ethnic groups here in America. We have to begin to deal with that. When you're talking about contracting, which you're going to deal with equity, then I think language has, has to be changed. We, we need to stop talking about make and then let's talk about shell. I think before we have a major storm or a nature event in the future, section three, you know, we talk about section three in some of these programs that include disadvantaged businesses, but they're, they're more like a best faith effort than carving out a piece of the pie and putting it on the side so that the minority community can, can, can divide that up. Do what Cindy Beth Alami did years ago with the Chabatullahs Project. Divided it up so that minority engineering firms and construction firms would have an opportunity. We have to start doing that work. And this is an age old question, right? And no one knows better than the African American community. What did we find out after Katrina? After $151 billion to deal with that disaster, $71 billion directly in this community, some say, the disparity gap was wider. The, the whole pyramid scheme had many African Americans who started up businesses to participate in a recovery actually go out of business. Age old game. No one knows it better than my community.
Okay, thank you. And let's, we'll start with Councilmember, no, we'll start with former Councilmember Thomas, the next question. Workers' rights and fair wages are priorities of the Power Coalition and the Urban League. Do you support a living wage and other policies that center people and workers' rights, such as a $15 an hour minimum wage? Mr. Thomas.
No, I support, I support a saving wage. By the time we do living wage, it's going to be obsolete. Look at this Seattle model and some of the West Coast models where they thought they got ahead of the curve, right? Where people were saying that if they did this living wage, it would break these communities. Well, we're finding out that those living wage initiatives, Stephanie, are not even enough. Let's sit down with the business community, with our political communities. This is a Davis Bacon, a right to work state. Let's sit down with our governor and use his influence, maybe to mitigate that or deal with some of that. Absolutely. But local 406, many of the unions, UTE, they've endorsed me. Step Up has endorsed me. And of course, you know, as the host of the Good Morning Show on WBOK, I dedicated a large portion of our show, not just to living wage, but for fairness and equity and a saving wage. New Orleans is a city, and this is how we described it growing up. It's a poor city, but it's not a broke city. A lot of money passes through this city, but it doesn't stay with, with the people who, who are the culture, who support the industry, who make this city what, what it is. Now, I don't support a, a living wage. I support a saving wage. Because by the time we do living wage, it'll be obsolete and the cost of living or inflation would have consumed it already.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes, so thank you, Stephanie. And so while I support this living wage, I mean, it is the most significant increase that the city has done for city employees. And so when you think about it, people were underpaid all these years. And so I'm glad to be part of a movement to increase the pay. But I also want to continue to work on this weight, this wage leverage because it needs to be higher. People are not able to take care of their family on the salary that they're making today. I really believe that once our living wage is enacted, people will have a little bit more, but we can't stop working right here. We got to continue because the cost of living goes up. And so we got to continue to be consistent with the cost of living. And again, this work was, is really passed due. It should have been done several years ago. But I'm glad to be part of a movement that recognized that people were not paid correctly and we're doing something about it. And we got to continue to push and we got to make sure that it's not just our city employees, our firefighter, you know, and making sure that our contractors that hire people in our city, that they're also mandated to make sure that they pay decent wage so people can take care of themselves.
Hey, thank you very much. And we'll stick with you, Councilmember Nguyen, for the next question, which is, the New Orleans City Council is unique in that it is the regulatory body for Entergy New Orleans. There are community concerns about raising energy costs, particularly following Hurricane Ida. How will you ensure that communities do not bear the brunt of corporate costs?
Yeah, so let me just be very clear. I am not in support in adding the cost on our rate payer. Our family has gone through enough financial strain for the past two years. These expense, we need to look at federal and state resources to help offset the cost. We need to make sure that we have our portfolio. And I know that, because I don't sit on the utility committee, Stephanie, but I've been tracking and following Entergy and the work that the utility is doing. I know that the council is pushing more for a clean portfolio, doing more solo, smart energy. And we need to continue to have them to invest in that, as well as to invest into our infrastructure. We also learned that the tower that came down, it belongs to Entergy Louisiana. But then they also needs, Entergy New Orleans needs to make sure that their parent company are doing the maintenance work as well. And that, that cost does not pass on to our rate payer. So I'm not in support of a rate increase for, for our rate payer. I really believe that we need to explore other funding to offset the costs related to Hurricane Ida.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Thomas.
Just quickly to deal with the wage issue, you remember I was part of the city council that actually passed a living wage. They had to take us to court. That's how bold our city council was. And of course, in articles that have been cited just year before last, this city council passed a living wage and the article, the research said people weren't getting it. In many cases, they weren't honoring the living wage. So this new city council will make sure that if we pass something, it's honored. And we'll be bold enough to take it to the next level when you talk about a saving wage. The, the utility is regulated. You know, as someone who was honored by the NFL, NFL mothers during Katrina cited by former President Bush, you know, for some of the work that I did. Ida wasn't Katrina. And thank God, it wasn't. You would have hoped that some of the recovery principles that, that, that we should have already been prepared for would have been in place, like trash debris pickup, Entergy. You would have thought in the last several years, energy, when we were digging up streets and redoing corridors, they would have put some of their lines underlying, underground. You would have thought that it would have been the type of intelligence that, where city council members were not just relying on their advisors, Stephanie. But you remember, we were as knowledgeable on those issues as the advisors were because we were familiar with the Southwest Systems Agreement, familiar with the North American grid and the South American grid, which wasn't working. And some of the things we're asking for now were actually recommended 10, 12, eight years, eight years ago. How do you mitigate the cost? If you, if you understand the franchise agreement, they're allowed to earn at a certain level. Well, maybe you mitigate the cost by taking a percentage of that earning, right, to protect the ratepayers now. First of all, who can't afford to do it? There are a lot of things. If you, if you understand the law and how, how it relates to regulating the energy, we have some options.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll stick with you, former councilman Thomas, for this last question. New Orleans is receiving over $100 million in federal American Rescue Plan funding. How do you think, what do you think is the best use of these funds to promote an equitable recovery? from both Hurricane Ida and from COVID?
Well, it's rescue funds to rescue who? Uh, is it to rescue government or to rescue businesses and citizens that have suffered and have to be rescued? Uh, I would hope that we begin to work with nonprofits, organizations like you guys. Uh, I, I think that the Power Coalition, the Urban League, I, I, I think too often we've allowed government to make decisions in silos, especially on the tail end of what people have, have gone through. I'd like to sit around with organizations like this, form a committee, and how do we best use those funds? Keep people in their apartments? Keep them in their homes? Allow them to maintain their small businesses? But that's not a decision that I would just want the city council, I just want the mayor to make. That's a decision I'd like from the business community to the hopper on the back of the trash truck to make. That because we've made those decisions in isolation before, and the money didn't go to rescue the people who needed to be rescued. And, and Stephanie, I hear a lot of people talking like $100 billion is a lot of money. Guess what? So all of these plans and ideas, people have to, we're going to do this and we, we, we're going to do that. It'll probably take a minimum of $100 million in some of those areas to do it the right way and mitigate some of the pain. So it has to be more than a political conversation. There has to be some thought and some thought leadership involved in this.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yeah, just on the, uh, rescue, uh, the funds, you know, one of the things that I'm extremely big on is to make sure that we engage all of our community members, from the business community to our, uh, community leaders, to understand the purpose of the resource and to make sure that we follow the guidelines in reference to the funding. We want to make sure that we spend according to what the federal government allow us to do. But Stephanie, one of the things that I see all the time in District E that I really believe that using the rescue funds will really help grow the city's general funds because this is a one-time funding, and we want to make sure that whatever we invest into is going to grow. So I think one, as we talked earlier about our small business owner, creating access capital for them. I think if we invest into our small business, then they would then grow ourselves to have. Then they will invest higher people, and then the economy is moving. That's one part that I have a great interest in feeling like that money should be invested in. The second part is a lot of our blighted property, our vacant lots. These properties are not generating any revenue, any property taxes for the city of New Orleans. Just imagine if we utilize some of these resources to get these, these property back into commerce, that the city of New Orleans can actually grow our property taxes. So again, always engaging with communities, but we got to look at strategy on how we can grow the pot of money because we all know that this is a one-time funding, and we got to use it wisely. And we got to make sure that the city of New Orleans will be able to grow and get back on its feet. But most importantly, community that's been suffering from blighted property, overgrown lots, from community that has not have access to capital, will have an opportunity, as we talked about equity. I think equity needs to be our lens in as we look at this funds.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you both for, um, sharing your thoughts on all of these important questions. And let's go to closing statements. And, um, for one minute each, let's start with Councilmember Nguyen.
Well, again, thank you to the Urban League of Louisiana, to the Power Coalition. Thank you, Stephanie, for, uh, hosting this and being a moderator. Again, my name is Cindy Nguyen. I am the council member for District E, where family always comes first. You know, I was elected four years ago, um, to this seat, inherit decades of neglect and abandonment. But I didn't shy away from work. I got work, started working, making sure that I built up relationship with our community, addressing issues, introducing legislation, looking at land use, zoning, looking at commercial property, getting it back into commerce, and all of those great thing. And then for, of course, three and a half year, you have over a year and a half that we were wiped out by the pandemic, but I didn't stop working. You know, we rerouted our focus to make sure that we were saving lives and keeping people safe, and we continue to do that. When Ida came, I didn't leave the city of New Orleans. I made promises to the citizen, and I stay and make sure that we were on the ground day one, if not the day of Ida, to make sure that people are safe. I'm committed. Again, you know, I'm asking for your vote. Um, I enjoy, I love the people in District E. I want to be able to continue a lot of the work, moving our district forward. Again, I've been transparent. I've been honest to the work, been acceptable. So again, my ballot number is 71. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. And former Councilmember Thomas?
Oliver Thomas, first of all, I want to thank the Urban League. Stephanie, uh, uh, thank you for all your work, uh, as an advocate, but also as a journalist, uh, over the last several years. I want to thank the Power Coalition, man. It would be an honor, uh, even though we never would have thought that, uh, District E would be number one in crime, number one in a lot of the issues uh, that we thought would never affect one of the strongest residential communities in the state. I still look at it as a jewel. I use survive. 7,000 acres, man, of a business and industrial park, 9.5 miles of coastline and beachfront property that we can build on. And most importantly, depending on who's, uh, the demographic and whose count you talk to, 70 to 80,000, man, of, of residents, people who are committed to this community and who, many of whom were pioneers, uh, in this area. You know, I, I like to go to the good book, especially when you talk about this district. Exodus 3.7 says, "I have seen the misery of my people in E." "I have seen the misery of my people in E, Egypt, and I am concerned." I think that if we can stabilize and mitigate what's happening here in District E from crime to economic development, close the gap in the disparity, it is the front, new frontier. If it's not Nine Mile and Jefferson Parish, where are we going to grow? We can't continue to stuff everything downtown. This movement with my campaign, business people are excited, educators are excited. I'm Oliver Thomas, number 72. District E and the Lower Ninth Ward are in, uh, District E and Lower Ninth are in the Ninth Ward. Seven plus two equal nine. God doesn't make any mistakes.
We're ending with a math lesson. Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you both again for joining us so much. Thank you for putting yourselves out there and for sharing your ideas.
Thank you.
And. Thank you.
And again, I'm going to send it back to the organizers.
Thank you so much, Stephanie, for moderating this evening. Thank you to the candidates. Uh, my name's Nicole Jolly, Vice President for, uh, Strategy and Engagement at the Urban League of Louisiana. And just on behalf of the Urban League, we want to say thank you to all of the candidates and to Stephanie. Um, before we close for the evening, we do have a few reminders. Um, I'm going to give just a few upcoming dates related to, uh, our last forum and then the upcoming election to make sure that you all have all the information you need to get out and vote. Um, so we have our last council forum tomorrow evening, starting at six, and we will have District D candidates. That will be the last forum of this session so that you will all be ready to get to the polls. Um, just a reminder that the dates have changed. Uh, so due to Hurricane Ida, the election date is now on Saturday, um, November 13th. And early voting will be from October 30th to November 6th. So mark your calendars and be ready. Um, and then in terms of the voter registration deadlines, those are coming up. So you can, uh, register to vote in person or by mail until October 13th, and then you can register to vote online, um, until October 23rd in order to be able to vote in this upcoming election. And with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Ashley Shelton with the Power Coalition to give everyone, um, an update and make sure that you are all just as aware about redistricting as you are about this upcoming election. Ashley?
Thank you so much, Nicole. And, um, again, thank you to all of our candidates tonight and certainly, uh, to you, Stephanie, for, uh, for presiding over this evening's candidate forums. We appreciate your voice. Um, you know, I, you know, we, what's really important, um, we talk about power all the time and making sure that people have, you know, like that vote, their voice um, is certainly their power. And redistricting is one of the, you know, most powerful points um, of, of power and community being able to elect candidates of choice. And so every 10 years, we do the decennial census. Um, and then following the census, we redraw political maps based on how and what ways our communities have shifted, um, given, given different demographics. We know that we did gain, gain a bit of, uh, population. So 2.74 increase, uh, 2.74% increase in population. We know that the state is blacker and browner than it was, uh, 10 years ago. And so what does that mean for, um, you know, for our communities all across the state? And how do those communities actually have the ability to, to elect candidates of choice? And that's the goal of redistricting, is to actually reflect population change and allow those folks to have fair representation in the electoral process. And so let's get engaged. So basically, October through January 2022, the, uh, Louisiana Legislature is going to be doing a roadshow. And the first one's going to be in Monroe on October 20th. And, um, the Power Coalition is working with, uh, the Urban League and many of our other partners to provide as many resources as possible. Um, certainly, um, at our website, powercoalition.org, um, we've got, um, you know, several resources. Uh, we've done crowd academies. We've trained everyday citizens on how redistricting works, and then, um, hopefully have the launch of, um, of a, of a website where we're all working together to provide additional resources on how to make comments on the record, as well as how to draw maps, um, to represent new communities of interest. And so these will be going on, um, throughout, uh, 2022, January 2022. And we, um, have not gotten a date for redistricting at the legislature, but we are thinking that it's going to be the first week of February, um, when this will kick off. Uh, as you can see, New Orleans will have, um, their first redistricting session, January 5th, um, at the University of New Orleans. And so it is so important that you guys start drawing maps. Um, it seems a little, it seems hard, but there's so many different tools out there. Days Redistricting App and others, um, you can access all of those things on our website. Again, powercoalition.org. And, um, and we welcome you to engage in the process. It's going to be really critical, um, for our citizens to be able to have maps that effectively, um, allowed them to elect candidates of choice and for them to have representation. And so, um, and so I want to thank all of our candidates that spoke tonight. Um, and Stephanie Grace again for, uh, being our moderator. And, um, the Power Coalition is always, uh, appreciative of its partnership of, uh, with the Urban League and the leadership of the Urban League. Um, and we will see you again tomorrow night. Um, and appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.